Welcome to the Wednesday, October 4th Board of Education meeting. We were meeting from six to seven to discuss contractual items. And we are going to, the pig students are here till nine o'clock unless the meeting gets over before that. So hopefully it'll get over before nine o'clock. If not, you're required to stay till nine o'clock. So if we can all stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Michael Cooper.
Meredith Moriarty.
Charmaine Buda Singer.
Jody Monroe.
Christine Beck.
Lynn Lindhart.
Holly Dallinball.
Jonathan Fishbein.
And Judy Kehoe.
Can we get a motion to approve the minutes from the September 19th, 2017 Board of Education meeting?
Second.
Any discussion, any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Do we have a representative from the Student Senate this evening? No? Okay. Next up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. First, I'd like to recognize some students who were honored recently. We had eighteen students who were among a select group of students from the Capital District to be honored by the University of Albany, the multicultural high school achievers. And actually Charmaine brought this little brochure in tonight to share. The students were singled out for their exemplary academic performance and leadership. The awardees and their guests were treated to a special day of activities at the university and took part in panel discussions, information sessions, tours, and more at U Albany. Also, we did have our first district strategic planning committee meeting. A few people were there. During the process of that meeting, we essentially reviewed the goals of the district. We talked about the plans for the committee and their role. We have a community forum next Wednesday evening, and in that meeting, we identified three questions that we're going to be posing to the community, essentially along the lines of if you have a current Bethlehem student, or if you do, what are your hopes and dreams for them as they leave Bethlehem? And we're looking at a kind of a date of 2025, so for planning purposes. We want to also ask the group to review the knowledge, character, value in the mission, and give us some feedback on that as well. So hopefully, we did send out an invite, and we have, I think, ten or twelve RSVPs at this point. So we'll do that again for the next couple of days, and we're hoping we get a good turnout for that. It's great to get feedback, and then the process from there is, I believe, we'll look to develop some kind of a survey tool that we can send out to the larger community, especially for those who aren't able to be there. So it are, one of our prior meetings, we talked about the role of the board in the process. If you wanted to participate, as you could, if you wanted to have specific reps attend or rotate that, so I don't know if you wanted to have that discussion.
Yeah, I wasn't able to attend for those that were at the strategic meeting. Did you feel it would be more beneficial to have the same board members attend, or?
Well, Lynn, Holly, and I were either.
I don't know how you, I think to the extent that there could be some continuity, I think it would be helpful.
I would agree with that, because the discussion, we already had significant discussion, and I think it would be helpful to have ongoing people, as opposed to having to spend time to recap each time.
Okay. Would the three of you want to continue?
Is that your sense, Lynn?
Sure, probably that makes sense.
Yeah, and I would be fine continuing.
And I know that I can't be at the community forum, because, and I think, I know the two of you were going to the legal conference, so you won't be able to go to the community.
But I will be there, and I think if anyone else is able to attend, it would be a great idea to have other people who can observe.
I was planning to be at the community forum.
Can students attend that, the community forum?
Absolutely, yeah. We hope that they do. Okay, so Holly, Lynn, and Charmaine will continue as reps for ongoing meetings, and okay, sounds great. I'd also like to invite some of our BCCF people to come on up and bring their large So if you want to introduce who's with you, and then talk a little bit about what you guys do for the school and our students.
Well, I'll let everyone introduce themselves, but I'm just going to tell you a little bit. Thank you for letting, giving Bethlehem Central Community Foundation a chance to speak tonight and accepting our donation. Bethlehem Central Community Foundation is an organization that works to support students, teachers, and the district in endeavors that are not typically funded by the school budget. We oversee numerous scholarships that are awarded to graduating seniors, as well as the classroom innovation grant program, which is why we are here tonight. Tonight's donation, which was raised from gifts from community members, is a little over eighty-four hundred dollars. This amount supports fourteen grants that will impact numerous classes this year and in future years. These grants will enhance the teaching in our middle school and high school foreign language classes, PE classes, history classes, and elementary classrooms. Through these grants, we encourage teachers to try new things that may not fit into the normal budget, and then if those ideas prove to be impactful, we hope that the district will find ways to fund them. For example, I'm putting a little plug in here, two years ago, we funded flexible seating in an elementary classroom, and it was so successful that we actually received about eight requests last year to fund it. That's not within our ability, what our idea is, we plant a seed, and if the seed is successful, then we hope the district finds ways, or schools find ways, to continue to fund that. So just keep that in mind.
And we did purchase some additional flexible seating this past year.
Wonderful, that is the goal of the BCCF, to have, for teachers, to have an idea, to try it out, and then be able to present it as successful. I want to thank mainly our donors in the community, because without their help, we couldn't do this. Over the last few years, we have given over fifty-six thousand dollars in grant funding, which has been applied across all of our schools, all of our grades, and all of our departments. As we have learned, a few dollars can make a lasting impact, and our slogan is, "Together we can make a difference," by supporting excellence in our schools, teachers, and the district. So if anyone wants to know more information about BCCF, feel free to check our website, BCCommunityFoundation.org. And thank you to the board for accepting our donation and giving us the opportunity to present our check to you tonight. And other board members, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, everybody.
Mike Clark, middle school freshman.
Tina Sheen, parent.
And we do have other board members who are not able to be with us tonight.
You didn't tell us who you were.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Patty Michelson, community member.
So, thank you for coming out, and we're very appreciative of all of the efforts and what you've done to help our classroom. So every year, it's great, and I hear great feedback from teachers about how happy they are to be able to receive some of the funding. So thanks for all your work.
So we would love to do a press release to the spotlight, so we'd love to do a photo with the entire board and the reps from the foundation.
Sure, sounds great.
And the big check.
And the big check.
You do a great job promoting this organization and the community.
It's probably maybe we're doing it mostly outside of the streets.
You know, the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation actually started as a Bethlehem Central Endowment Fund many years ago, and it was, you know, a struggle to get started, and it basically was a pass-through for scholarships, and that was the focus of the organization. And as it morphed over the years and became a foundation, started doing the, you know, innovative funding for, you know, good, you know, for good teaching, for good, great ideas, and I just think, you know, it's really come a long way, and, you know, you've done a great job.
Yes, a lot of hard work.
So I thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to evolve your comment a little bit. So lending to the credibility structure, just so the board is aware of this, prior to, or at the time of that name change, we created, we became a fund of the Greater Capital Region Merity Foundation, which confers anybody that makes a donation to us, it confers the legitimacy of a tax deduction to them. So you can say we went legit. And to Lynn's point, it really, that was the trigger point for us being able to do a lot of the good work that has been done over the last five, six years. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Yep. So for the Board of Education report, does anybody have anything they want to talk about?
I just want to ask if any, you know, for the conference next week, with you and Meredith being the delegates, did any board members feel strongly about any of the resolutions to guide you in your selection, or should we just leave it up to them to use their best judgment?
Or if there's anything that you saw in the resolutions that you want feedback or comment on?
Right.
I felt comfortable with, with their recommendations from what I, what I read, but I'm going to read through it even more before I, I go and ponder it a little more, but I felt comfortable with the recommendations.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that I've delved very deep into it. I've looked at them all and feel comfortable with them, but if there's anything that I find concerning, I would certainly want some feedback from everybody.
Is there something you feel strongly about, Lynn?
Probably the change in bylaws allowing a member of the Black Caucus of School Board Members to be a member of the Board of Directors, just to have more diversity on the Board of Directors, more representative of the population state.
That's one of the proposals?
That's one of the proposals. So probably feel somewhat strongly about that.
And it's been proposed before, correct?
Right, last year, and it just failed by a few votes, and so I think probably people have done their homework, and may not be an issue this year, but still, want to make sure that it does pass.
And NISBA is recommending that?
Originally, yes, very much so.
And I've attended their meetings at the conference, and they actually sponsored a program that I presented a few years ago, so.
I did want to bring up, we had talked about it in June, it was the food services, and I just had an opportunity this past week to review the food service price increases. And I didn't feel that I could get a good history from fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen to seventeen, eighteen, as to the increases in the prices, and to see if that's, what portion of that is self-sustaining the program. So I just wanted to see if we could formalize more of a structure around reporting that out every year, just so we can see year over year and get a better idea of the cost per items.
Now, we usually set the price for the actual lunch program, and then see how that affects the purchases, but you're talking about like each bag?
The individual items.
Each bag of chips or?
They added a lot of à la carte items, and I, you know, from a board perspective, and this is just my opinion on it, I just wanted to get an idea how much we're increasing prices of the services or the food that we're providing to the students to make sure that it's not just a burden on them to cover this self-sustaining portion of our program. And I, I didn't get a feel from that, from the records that I got. I couldn't, I couldn't determine if, you know, coffee went up a dollar or?
Yeah, it was difficult to figure out what the price differential was from year to year to year, especially when there were a lot of items that weren't included. And as we add more à la carte items, they seem, as I, as I guessed from some of the information, it seems that more of the dollars are being brought in that way. So getting the price difference of fewer meals, when we're taking more dollars with à la carte items, you really can't get a feel for where the increase in the stability of the program is coming from. Is it actually from people buying more, or is it because we raised prices?
The higher cost to you.
The, when did we go off the federal program? Was it then?
Three years ago.
Four years ago.
Four years, three or four years now.
So was that fifteen, sixteen?
I think so. I'd have to look to confirm the years blend together.
It might be fourteen, fifteen that we went off of it.
Yeah, but it's a combination of both increased meal sales, because that's something that Alisa sends to me every month, and I look at that, and I can see what the average daily meal revenue is, based on however many days there are in a particular month. So that has been trending up. I just looked at the September numbers, and they were about a hundred dollars higher than last year in September. So yes, you know, as the word spreads about the quality of the program, those figures go up as well. And then the à la carte, I mean, that does change quite a bit in terms of the offerings, because sometimes we'll get suggestions from students or staff about things that they would like to see there, and Alisa will use her best efforts to get that there. If the underlying price that she's paying for those items changes during the year, they're bid more than just once a year, so she puts a margin on that to help cover the other labor costs associated with that. So her prices will go up and down, but it's usually a function of how much above cost is she going to sell it? And then it's just volume from there.
Right, but we, we should, we keep track of that.
Right, and so she is keeping a detailed list of what those items are and what the prices are, knowing that you're interested in that, she'll just maintain it and have it available going forward.
Does everybody on the board concur with kind of having a better grasp on?
I'm more interested in themes than the individual pricing. I'm interested in what's driving the increases, Jonathan said, is it sales, or is it the price points, or is it both? If the Student Government Association can check in with students to do a survey, do students feel like there's a hardship to purchase any items? Is there something in particular, à la carte items versus meals, is that? I'm more interested in themes and individual pricing. I don't think, for me, as a board member, I should be concerned with individual bag of chips and how much they went up every year, and is that a hardship for students? But is the overall price increases in line with trends in other districts? Is it sustaining the program, and is it sustaining the program unfairly on the backs of students? So the general things, but I'm not interested in individual pricing.
And from what Judy says, it, she's, there's not random increases, it's just a percentage above what the purchase price is. There's some formula that's done.
There's a method to the madness on price setting.
Well, the reason I ask is because when I first joined the board four years ago, we had a very lengthy discussion over a ten cent increase in milk. And we did, I don't know if anybody who's still on the board remembers that.
I remember that.
So, and we were adamant that we were not raising the milk price ten cents, so.
Because that's, you know.
Because some elementary kids, that's the only thing they buy.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, I understand. So just, just to see, maybe for the first year, to get a good handle on how much we see the margin changes for the first year, that's what I was really looking to see. Obviously, we can't keep track of the items that were starting, were discontinuing, we might realize we're not selling them as quickly as we want to, and we make a quick shift. Those aren't the items I'm looking, I'm looking for the big items to see, are we having, you know, fifty cent increases or dollar increases? I'm not looking for the really nominal, just to get a better handle on, on the revenue.
And her, like any retail organization, her pricing shifts. So if there's a particular item that's coming close to an expiration date, the price will go down if it's not moving. So if there's something that's selling particularly well, she might raise it a nickel or something. So it's kind of supply and demand. Her ultimate goal is to run a balanced program for us, and to keep the meals interesting to students and of high quality. So, I mean, she's shown us that she has been doing that, and I'll recap that in the presentation just a little bit.
Does anybody have anything else?
I have a couple of things. One, just piggybacking on the SUNY program, Dr. Carr, one of our guidance counselors, spoke at that event, and her father actually started it thirty years ago. So she shared a history of it, and her father, I believe, I may have positioned wrong, but perhaps was the Assistant Vice President for Academic Affairs, and he actually started that program. So she spoke, so I want to acknowledge her, and her, and also the, the efforts of the guidance councils, because the students were nominated by guidance councils here. So appreciate their effort. Also, I attended open house here at the high school, and it was a very warm night. I really appreciate the fact that some of the teachers actually had coolers of water for us, as well as the PTO. But literally, I would go to a classroom, and teachers were handing out water and fans, so people were doing what they could to make it more manageable. And lastly, I did ask for bus accident data, because I know that there were already some accidents this year, and the district did provide that to the board members. And I'm not speaking for the board, but I would recommend, put this up for discussion, that if training, obviously correlation does not mean causation, we know that, but if there is an issue with training, and it can be shown a consistent pattern that additional training results in decreased accidents, because I noticed that the training was eliminated because of budget, and then it was brought back, but not at the same level, that the Transportation Department consider that in their budget.
I thought we did bring back the training to what we used to do.
Was it, I thought it was down to like three sessions versus six or something? I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we're up to five, I believe it is for a year. Two are mandated, and then the others are supplemental on a variety of topics.
But that's why I asked, I asked for that data, so, that's it.
Today was National Walk to School Day. A lot of our schools participated in it. I personally walked with my children to school this morning, and just wanted to thank all the organizers and volunteers who helped at all the different schools, that's a big program, and the kids had a lot of fun. We, I know certainly at Elsmere, we had a lot of kids participate, and it helps build community and help children learn that exercise can be fun, and I think it will hopefully get a lot of kids more in the habit of walking or biking to school. So I just wanted to thank those organizers.
I actually have one more thing. I want to acknowledge the boys soccer team. They were at the farmer's market this past Saturday selling pizza tickets, and for ten dollars, you'll get a pizza this Friday, and all of the proceeds are going for hurricane relief. And so I'm not sure if the team came up with that, but they were staffing the booth, they're making the pizzas, and a hundred percent of the money given is given, given hurricane relief. I'm not sure if it's just in Puerto Rico, but just want to acknowledge that team.
Okay. Next up is our presentation by Judy Kehoe, and we have our auditors here from Marvin
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're going to give you the quick update of one of my favorite times of the year, one of the tasks that we do, that we actually get to check it off and fully complete, which is the year-end financial statement preparation and then the audit. This is one of the things that we do to show that we are accountable to the community, and show that we're following the rules that we should be for financial reporting, and that our numbers can be relied upon, whether it's people holding the school district's bonds or others in the community. We have had Marvin and Company doing our audit for the last two years now. We go through an RFP process every five years, and tonight, we have Chris Healy of Marvin and Company, who is going to give you a recap of their audit, and then following his presentation, I'll give you a very quick overview of how our revenues and expenditures look for both the general fund and then also for the food service fund.
Mrs. Kehoe, before he starts, can you just, for the students, but tell them why we have auditors and what this is about? For the students, President, if you'd mind, just?
School districts have multiple auditors, so this particular audit is the independent external audit, and it is required for school districts, and it is also required for us because of the amount of federal dollars that we receive in support of our programs. So this audit is very comprehensive, it covers multiple areas, both the general purpose financial statements, our student club accounts, the extracurricular activity funds, and then all of our federal programs for the single audits. So one of several audits that we have. Okay.
All right, thanks, Judy. So we went through our audit report in pretty great detail with the Audit Committee a couple of weeks ago, so I'm going to just go through the high-level overview. And if you're looking at the financial statements, basically, this summary can be found on page F5. It gives you all the summary results. So the district engaged us to perform the audit of the financial statements, as well as to audit the major federal award programs under uniform guidance, formerly known as the single audit, and also to audit the extra classroom activity fund. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements, as well as design and implementation of internal controls over financial reporting. Our responsibility as the auditor is to gather audit evidence on a test basis to support the opinion on the financial statements, and as part of that process, we consider internal controls, but we give no opinion on internal controls. So the biggest question that everybody has, we have a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion on the financial statements this year. There are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over financial reporting. There is no non-compliance material to the financial statements to report. There are no material weaknesses in internal control over major federal programs. We did have one significant deficiency in internal control over major federal programs. This was discussed with the Audit Committee. That finding was related to documentation in the Title I program, but we did find no issues in substance that would create an issue, it was just a matter of documentation. We will be issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance for the major federal programs in accordance with uniform guidance. If you look at the next spot down on that page, there's kind of another spot for findings to be reported in accordance with the uniform guidance. Again, that's only the one finding that I just mentioned. The next section down on that page lets the reader know that we tested both the child nutrition and Title I programs. And something that I did want to point out, we tested child nutrition at a number of districts this year, and almost every single one of them had some pretty significant findings. We have none to report, so that's something that the district should be very happy to hear and to be proud of. It is a very complex program, there's a lot of moving pieces. The district did qualify as a low-risk auditi. Basically, that just means that we take some criteria that are set by the standards, and it takes into account the internal controls, and it, it just reduces the amount of testing that we're required to perform, because we can rely on the systems that are in place. Again, we had no financial statement findings, and then on the extra classroom activity funds, we'll also be issuing an unmodified opinion. There were a couple of findings, which were discussed in detail with the Audit Committee. Those things are best practice recommendations that the state expects us to report based on. So we did have some good discussion on those items. There's nothing that we considered to be significant or unusual for those funds. So with that, I'd like to thank Judy and all of the business office for all of their help in making it a smooth process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We agree, it was a smooth process, and we'll give a giant shout-out to Mrs. Iser for the food service program. I'm going to give you a very quick recap of how we did. The financial statement is about eighty pages in length, so if you're looking for some late-night reading, it's available on our website and available for public inspection. The general fund expenditures, we had a budget of about ninety-six point five million dollars in the sixteen-seventeen school year, and we came in at about one point nine million dollars under budget, which is a small percentage of our total budget. Better, of course, to come in below than to be bumping up into the limit or overspending. Our actual expenditures did increase about three percent from the 2016 school year into the coming year. The largest portion of that increase was driven by our instructional program, which is, of course, what we put our greatest efforts into. And that increase covers the gamut of both staff salaries, as well as professional development and other things in support of the program. The pupil transportation is up from the prior year, and that reflects, if you recall back to two budget cycles ago, when we added five additional elementary routes in order to ease some crowding on the buses. So that's a large piece of what that increase relates to. The employee benefits, I'll give you some additional details on the next slide, but that was, the decrease was driven by reductions in our pension contribution rates for both the teacher's retirement system and the employee's retirement system. Debt service number is higher, partially offset, of course, by building aid on the state aid side, but that reflects the issuance of the bonds for the last capital project that we did from 2013. Our fringe benefits, as you can see, are Our fringe benefits, as you can see, our health insurance increased nominally. But any increases that we had there or in the other line items were more than offset by the reductions in our pension costs. So we're pleased with that. The workers' comp number was a little bit higher this past year because we had some settlements that we took care of. And you may recall, we lowered our workers' comp reserve amount by virtue of that payments. On the revenue side, we came in almost spot on with the adopted budget. We were just shy of $400,000 more than what we had budgeted. That $2.3 million increase is largely driven by the increase in our state aid. Recall that 1617 was the final restoration of our gap elimination adjustment that the state had withheld those monies. So that was a nice influx into our revenues. The other larger increase was from our school taxes. And I know the inquiring minds want to know why, with a tax levy of only 0.81% and $512,000, why did our school taxes go up $757,000? And the reason for that reflects the shift in the STAR program at the state level, where remember that they're pulling that STAR benefit off the local tax bills and moving it to a state-administered program. So that reduction in the STAR pilots line is largely caused by more tax dollars coming to us, because it's a lesser STAR payment amount.
And you mentioned the gap elimination adjustment, that we should not anticipate receiving that bump next year.
That is correct. It has been fully restored. So there are no anticipated large influxes in state aid in this coming budget cycle or in this school year either. On our fund balance, this is very close to where we had projected it would be at the end of the year. The actual surplus of about $2.3 million was closed into that undesignedated, unreserved portion of fund balance. That's the piece that has to be below 4%. And when we had done the projection, I think we were at closer to 3.9%. We came in just slightly below that. The increase where we put that surplus was essentially into the capital reserve, as the board had approved. And those monies will be used to reduce the amount of bonding that will be required when we issue bonds on the next capital project. On the school lunch side, the revenues increased almost $88,000 from the actual results in 2016 to the current 2017 year-end. And you can see those increases came from a variety of different categories of revenue, both from the actual meal sales and from the à la carte items. We had a nice uptick as well in faculty and staff sales. So it's always wonderful when the employees help support the program as well. And that increase in revenues went a long way towards closing the gap that we had had in the prior year and helped lead us to a surplus for the first time in many years. This year was also the first year that we exceeded that $1 million mark in actual lunch sales, which was a major highlight. We've typically had total revenues in excess of a million, but not from the actual sales of the food items.
The catering and vending, is that going to continue into the? Is she looking to grow that in future years?
She has just been updating her catering menu and is working with getting that information out to the buildings, sharing that information with the athletic program and the boosters for any events that they might be holding, letting them know that she is here and she has items that she can help them with, perhaps save them some legwork on going out and buying other supplies and just letting her have the program do that. So yes, you should see that increasing somewhat from one year to the next.
And I just wanted to point out, though, the biggest change from the actual, from 16 to 17, was in the student à la carte items, which was about $56,000, which is quite a bit. And it could be just that we expanded the menu. That's all that I'm really trying to get at, like what is the actual, what caused the 56?
And part of that analysis, when Elise Isner does her presentation at the end of the year, will tell you what those top sellers are. Because it's always interesting. It will vary from one year to the next. Does tastes change, perhaps, and the student body changes? But it is interesting information to have. And then on the expenditure side, there was an increase of about $23,000, which was more than offset by that revenue increase, which is why we were able to end the program with a $12,000 surplus for the year, which, as you can see from the two prior years' actual, she had gradually been whittling down the amount of the deficit with the program. We ended the year last year with a negative fund balance, which is generally not good. Fortunately, it was a small amount of only $2,000. But the program is back in the black as of the end of this year, which was an enormous effort on behalf of Alisa as the director and all of the staff in all of the buildings. So that is a quick recap of the program and results for the year. If there are any questions?
Judy, on slide four, you were talking about the increase in bus routes that had resulted in an increase in cost. We had talked about, I believe it was the beginning of this, with this board, we had talked about increasing the bus runs into Clarksville to lower the amount of time.
Yes.
Can you project what that is going to cost any better now than at that time?
It will be within the projected amount that we had estimated. Those are fairly certain estimates. We know what it costs to add a route. So you will see the actual numbers for next year reflecting that uptick for the addition of those routes at that time, but within budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chris. Have fun reading that 80-page report.
And thanks to the business department, too, headed by Judy and all the competent people in it. I know many districts do not get such clean reports. And I think everyone does a great job.
Thank you. I will convey thanks to the staff.
At this time, we'd like to recognize any visitors here on an agenda item. Is there anybody who would like to speak on an agenda item? Item number eight, finance. We're going to break out item one and two separately from the Resolution for State Environmental Quality Review Act. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through two.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance item, action number three.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Why was it broken out? Just out of curiosity.
Then why was it broken out? You asked me to break it out.
Actually, just the audit.
Oh, the audit. They just wanted to do it separately.
It's all right.
Okay.
I'm sure it's fine.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries? Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 13. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries? Item number 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through eight.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention? Motion carries? Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, number one. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposition? Motion carries? At this time, we'd like to recognize visitors on a non-agenda item. You can state your name. Get up to the microphone. It can either come out or you can lift it up.
Good evening. My name is Jeremy Johansson. I am a district resident since 2010. I have a eighth grader who attends the middle school and a fifth grader who is served by a BOSI's program that is housed in Westmere Elementary in the Gilderlin School District. I'm here this evening to bring to the board's attention the district's distinct lack of a formal policy that guides the participation of students in field trips. It is my understanding that there is a consistent practice of excluding students who are homeschooled, attend a private school, or are served in out-of-district placements, such as my fifth-grade son. And I'm a little surprised by this, particularly considering that the district has other policies that stipulate that there is to be opportunities for participation by students with disabilities within all district programming. That's policy 4321.14. And further disappointed by this current position of the district based on the first day of school, when the entire faculty donned T-shirts that had "Together" on it to promote the district's goal of positive and inclusive environment for all. That seems to be excluding students that are served by no decision of their own or by their parent in an out-of-district placement. The nature's classroom program in particular is serving all district's fifth-grade students. I would assume, as the district's other policies also point out, that the fifth-grade program that is being provided to my son in an alternate location is comparable to the fifth-grade curriculum and program that's being provided here. And so I'm very curious as to why, rather than seeking to provide an inclusive environment and allowing as many students to participate as possible, that we are, without a formal written policy, excluding a student that wishes to participate in a district program based only on "this is how we've always done it", which is fancily stated as a consistent practice. So I would like to formally request that the Board of Education direct the policy committee to address this lack of a policy so that we can protect both the superintendent and the district from any potential liability in inappropriate enforcement of what is an unwritten policy. And further, if this board chose to take up this matter specifically to allow my son to participate, I would, of course, welcome that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. For future meetings, we have the, on Wednesday, October 11th, we have the 6:30 Community Forum meeting. Wednesday, October 18th, we have a regular Board of Education meeting. November 1st, we have another Board of Education meeting. And the 15th of November, which will be at Elsmere. And to go back, November 1st is at, we'll be here. And the 18th is at Slayarland. So everybody goes to the right places. And we have no need to go back into executive session at this time. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All, pick students, please come up and we will sign your sheet if you need to. And there's also a sign-in sheet on all sides of the table.